I just have a statement to read right before we get started. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Fridley Independent School District 14 School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Citizens who would like to address the board on a topic of the meeting agenda may email the Fridley School Board at schoolboard@fridley.k12.mn.us prior to the meeting. Please include your full name, the agenda item you wish to speak to, and your question or comment on the agenda item. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School Board members wishing to speak should state their name, then wait to be recognized. The chair will determine the order in which Board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the Board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each School Board member should wait until their name is called before voting. And with that, I would like to call the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could start with that, please. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America.
And one nation under God. Thank you. And I would like to start with our brand-new board member, Mr. Ross Meisner. Welcome. Um, I'm going to read the Oath of Office script. It is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community students. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable equality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designated to, I'm sorry, designed to ensure that all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As Board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. As a board member, your leadership and contribution to Fridley Public Schools is very valuable. We will support and champion the district's vision of becoming the best place to learn and the best place to work. Furthermore, as a world-class community of learners, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling our mission, which is to challenge and inspire our students and our community to become caring and knowledgeable lifelong learners who inquire to take action to create a better world. And I believe you have a response for us.
I believe I do. Having signed the acceptance of office and the oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 14 to the very best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Welcome to the school board.
Thank you so much. Look forward to it.
Hey, at some point, we'll all be able to give high fives and recognition again. Until then.
Welcome aboard.
Good job.
I took a picture, so I took a screenshot, and that sums up 2020 for me.
That's what we did. All right, so moving forward, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with suggestion, motions, and resolutions.
Second.
Second. Okay, moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. Any discussion? And I will call the roll. So we, Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Karna.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perito, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, Dr. Heil, Employee of the Month for December, please.
Thank you Chair Perito and School Board members. I would like to say congratulations to Jan Kaven, who was the secretary to the principal of the Area Learning Center for being selected as the December 2020 Employee of the Month. This was written by her principal, Dr. Bodie. I want to recognize and celebrate the work and contributions that Jan Kaven makes for the Fridley Area Learning Center and our school district. Jan is the secretary at the ALC, and she has been in the Fridley system for four years. First of all, Jan is fiercely loyal, and her top priority is to serve our students, staff, and the community. She greets everyone with a smile, stays calm in any situation, and gets the job done. She does all of this without complaint and simply seeks solutions to better any situation. If you need something, Jan's got your back. She has a fully stocked workplace with everything from staples to chocolate to hand sanitizer. If for some reason she doesn't have something you need, by the next day she will. Jan reach extends beyond the walls of the ALC building, and she supports enrollments and programming for the High School Extended Day Credit Recovery Program and our K-8 Targeted Services Program. Our students and staff truly love working with Jan, and we couldn't do it without her. For the reasons and many, many more, Jan Kaven is the Fridley Public School December 2020 Employee of the Month.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, Jan. Next, truth in taxation presentation, Ms. Barbie, please.
Thank you Chair Person Perito, Superintendent Heil, and Board members. I hope you made popcorn and ready for this presentation. It's gonna be just stimulating. All right, so per statute, each school district does need to give a truth in taxation presentation, and that presentation does need to be done between November 25th and December 28th and held after 6 o'clock, so we are providing that presentation to you. So, yep, there we go. Perfect. Okay, so what we're going to talk about in this presentation then is just some background information on school district funding, our district's budget, and then the proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2021. And then we will, slightly, for any public comments if we have anyone in the public listening and/or listening. So the first slide here just talks about that the Minnesota Legislature must set funding for Minnesota Public Schools, and that is done through taxation of our taxpayers. And so we are just providing information on how that is provided. The funding that we receive is highly regulated formulas, determine most of our revenue, and it's based on specified per pupil dollar amounts. The tax policy is specific for local school districts, and there are maximum authorized tax levy amounts that we must abide by. Yep, so we can just keep on cruising here, Lori. So what the challenges are basically is that state does provide basic general education formula for each student. However, it lags in increasing for the, taking into account inflation. So basically, what's happening is that currently, we are receiving, as an example, $6,567 per pupil just in general ed, basic formula. When they had kept pace with inflation, that amount would be $7,070 per student. So on the next slide, there's a nice graph here that Ellers always provides us that shows here's that lag. So we're actually $503 per student less than if they had kept pace with inflation. Next slide, we just talk a little bit about underfunding of special education. This is just one example of an area in which there is gross underfunding by the federal and state. So programs are underfunded by about $822 million, or an average of 40% underfunded for special education in Minnesota. So this translates into a statewide funding shortfall of about $5,700 per special ed student, just to put it in some context for you. On the next page, then, we talk about an operating referendum, and the states, most districts do have to rely on an operating referendum. So in comparison, in school year '93, 65% of districts had operating referendums, and that revenue average was about $332 per pupil. Fast forward to today, every district has some form of operating referendum that they have in their district, and that's averaging about $1,570 per pupil. So that just gives you an awareness of the underfunding that all the school districts are going through. The next slide talks a little bit about change in tax levy does not determine a change in budget. They are not the same. So because a tax levy, you know, is predetermined, and that provides us funding for different programs or different purposes, there can then be a decline in aid. So a lot of our categories are what we call equalized funding. So we have levy giving some money, so the taxpayers give some money, and then we also have aid where the state gives us some money. That does not mean if our taxes go up that we're gonna stay here. A lot of times, it means our aids go down. So we're still at the same dollar value, so our budget does not increase. So just to keep that in mind, that there are many factors that kind of come into play. The next slide just talks about the levy cycle, where the city and county, they're on a calendar year. School district, of course, is on that school year or fiscal year calendar, where we begin July 1st and then June 30th. So this confuses a lot of people, but it, once you have it in your head, it's pretty straightforward until you're trying to project out, which I struggle with sometimes. So anyway, the taxes that school districts are looking to receive are actually in arrears, if you will. So when we went out for our vote in '20, as an example, that affected taxes payable in '21. We don't get that money until fiscal year '22. So we're always behind in that collection. So anything that we collect is always going to be back another year. So that's just something to keep in mind. However, we have to project or predict what our budget is going to be as early as, you know, well, as late as June 30th. That's the latest date that we can get our budget in for the next fiscal year. So the next slide just gives you an idea of the different funds that each school district works with. And so we've got our general fund, which is where the majority of our dollars are. Food service is quite self-explanatory, as well as community service, building construction, so we do have dollars in our building construction, as well as debt service, because we did a building construction, so obviously we have debt. We have an internal service fund, and that is for our self-insured dental and health plans. And then we have an OPEB trust and an OPEB debt service, and that's for other post-employment benefits for our past employees. So what you're going to look at now is just the budget publication report that we have to submit to the Department of Education. And this just simply tells us where we began fiscal year '20, where we ended up, and where we think we're heading for fiscal year '21. So as you can see, we ended last year at $19,493,442 in fund balance. And so we're projected to increase just very slightly for fiscal year '21. And of course, these are all preliminary. We will be doing a revised budget. But this is what the board approved prior to July 1st of 2020. The next slide just gives you a breakout of how the funds, excuse me, yeah, how the different funds are, all play together. So our fiscal year '21 adopted budget, all funds combined, is about $56 million. Our general fund, of course, is the largest pile, and that's about 82%, and that comes in at roughly $45, $46 million. And then you can see where the rest of the funds fall in comparison to that general fund. Then breaking that out a little bit further for the general fund, the majority of our dollars do come from the state in aid. So in our basic revenue formulas and those different kinds of things, any equalized categories that we have, we are getting some aid. Federal dollars come in at about 3%, and that would include our special ed, any titles, those different kinds of things are federal. Our state, excuse me, then our local is the levy, the levy dollars that we get from our taxpayers, as well as any miscellaneous interest or fees and those different kinds of things. And that comes in at roughly 19% for our district. Conversely, then, looking at the expenditures, the budget for our expenditures in the general fund are roughly $46 million. So they're very comparable to what the revenues are, and they should be. You can see then that the vast majority of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits, which is very typical for most businesses, as well as school districts. So we're seeing about 73% to 75% of our entire budget spent on salaries and benefits. Our purchase services would be any contractors or, you know, any, our auditors, our attorneys, those kinds of folks that come in and do work for us. That comes in at about 17.5%. The supplies and materials that our teachers are needing or other general type of supplies as well is about 3%. Capital expenditures are also at 3%. Our debt service is very minimal at 0.6%, and then other is at 2.2%, and that's kind of our catch-all for like our fund transfers and those different kinds of things. The next page then talks about this breakout only by program. So the area of teaching and learning and those different kinds of things. So our regular instruction is the vast majority, which it should be, we're at school. So that comes in at right around 37%, and then you can see the other breakouts. Vocational ed is about 1%, our special ed is 20%. Our instructional support, so this would be like our media specialists, those kinds of folks, that comes in at 7%. The pupil support services, those would be our social workers or transportation, those kinds of costs, any counseling, that sort of thing. That comes in right around 11%. Then we have our site and building, so that's our long-term facilities, maintenance, our operating capital, those kinds of things, that comes in at roughly 10%. Our other is at 2.8%, that's our transfers and our oddball things that we have, our insurances, the capital project levy transfer has to occur in those areas. And then we have administration, and then the district support services. So that would be like our business support and our district office and that, those areas. So next then, we'll just talk a little bit about the property tax levy itself. And so the next slide just talks about what the property tax background is, that every owner of taxable property pays property taxes. And so that's gonna include all the different taxing jurisdictions that they're tied to. So there's city, state, township, school district, special district, whatever that might be. So the way that this works then is that the county will send a proposed tax statement. And you can see what, an example of that on the next slide. So that just shows an example of what that proposed tax statement looks like, and you receive those in November. Then each school district then has up to 40 different categories that they can tax levy in. So there's a lot of moving parts with this. And so then the Minnesota Department of Education calculates the maximums for each one of those. So in the property tax cycle, if you will, I'm just gonna skip to the next one then. We have a little graph here that just basically shows what the steps are. So the first step is for the county or city to assess the estimated market value of each parcel, of each property. Then the legislature sets the formulas and determines, you know, how much everybody gets. The county auditor then calculates the tax capacity for each parcel of property. The legislature then sets formulas based on that information. Then the Department of Education calculates levy limits for each district based on the formulas that the legislature said. And then finally, the school board gets to do something. This is the only place where you get to act on something. And basically, you get to say how much people get taxed. That's it. So you don't have any, you don't have any say in any of this. You just basically have to decide what it is that we're going to tax our taxpayers. And then the county auditor divides that total information up, and then each property owner then will understand how much they owe in property taxes. So the schedule of events then that happened for Fridley Public Schools, September 8th, the Minnesota Department of Education gave us the levy limitation report. First shot, we got to look at it. The 15th, then, the school district just said, we haven't had time to really look at this in full detail. We will just set it at the maximum, which is what 99% of school districts in Minnesota do. And then mid-November is when all the taxpayers got their little statement, tells them how much they can assume that they're gonna be taxed as the proposed property tax statement. We're having our truth in taxation hearing tonight. And then as soon as I'm done, and then in one of the motions that you're going to have, you as the school board will determine then what that tax levy amount is. So the next page actually gets to some meat that you're probably interested in. So the proposed tax levy for '21 is an increase of about $131,838, or 1.1%. So it's very, very minimal. The, this includes a decrease from proposed levy approved by the school board in September because of district refinancing some existing bonds. So yay us, we did, we did our due diligence, and we're good stewards, and ensured that we were refinancing, refunding, and getting a better rate for our taxpayers. The total saving from the refinancing was about $338,000, and so that is affecting the taxes that we're levying from 2021 through 2025. So as part of the requirements for a truth in taxation meeting, we do need to talk about what the changes were and list any major changes. So the next page is going to be very difficult to read, but basically what it's saying is it's giving a comparison of the different fund levy categories that we have, what we had in '20, what we are looking at in '21, and what that change was. Overall, again, our change in all funds that we levy on was 1.1%. So I will describe just a few of those as per requirement. So on the next page, then, we're just gonna talk about, we did have a voter-approved operating referendum. So that is one of the major changes, and that was an increase of $138,414, voters-approved an operating referendum. Now, the revenues are partially funded by the state through an equalization. And so that means that our taxpayers are not paying the full levy amount. We did get aid with that, and so that's really important for us to remember. The next one then talks about our capital project referendum. Our value, both our referendum market value and our net tax capacity value for the entire school district continues to increase at quite a large rate. So we are increasing value very quickly. And so because the entire value of the tax base is going up, that means that we're gonna be paying more in levy and less in aid because we appear property-rich. So that's something to keep in mind. The other thing that happened then was that we had a reduction in our debt excesses of over $100,000. And we use our debt excess, what that is, whenever a district does bond of any sort or gets, you know, a referendum bond type of money, we are required by state to levy our taxpayers 105% of that debt service payment amount. And the reason for that is if there's ever a delinquency, if someone doesn't pay their taxes. And so then that amount then is, helps to take care of any shortfalls that may be. We haven't had any shortfalls. And so that money just accumulates over time. So there are formulas in the state law then that determine how much of that we can have in an excess balance. And so what we have for levy reduction for '21 is more than what we had in '20. So the next, I'm just gonna go on then to the next slide, which talks a little bit more about the comparison that I want to show you for different values of homes and those, different home values, as well as commercial and apartments. So you get an understanding of what our taxing brackets, what's going on with them. So please note that we're showing 2018 to 2021, and this is a 20.2% increase in property value over that timeframe. That's how quickly our property value is increasing, so just to please keep that in mind. Okay, so, oh, yeah, so the impact on taxpayers is 2021, we are going with preliminary estimates. We were using the latest data possible, but it is an estimate. And then these estimates are prepared by Ellers, just as a, so you have a, understand where the numbers are coming from. Okay, so what this next page shows is what an estimated market value looked like in 2018, 2019, 2020, and then what it's looking like today. So what I would like to do is, and I know it's hard to read, but if you could focus on the 20, excuse me, the $200,000 value. So as a, as a form of reference, in 2018, that $200,000 house was about $166,384, getting taxed at $1,018. So fast forward to today, that's now a $200,000 house because of the increase in property value, the increase in tax-based value. And that then is $1,177, which over time, and I believe Donna, you had asked this question at a, or excuse me, Chairperson Perito, you had asked this question at a former meeting. And so, so that amount has increased by $160. That doesn't mean that the district taxes, you know, that we increased it by anything that the district has asked for. It's just simply the market value has increased that much. What is very interesting is the last column, and I'm very excited to tell you this, that our taxes then on that $200,000 home from last year to this year is decreasing by $18 annually. And the reason for the decrease is twofold. The first piece is that we did a refunding, the second is fiscal disparities. Because of fiscal disparities, that does have an impact on your taxable tax capacity. And so that worked in our benefit this year, that we actually then are seeing a decrease to our taxpayers. So that's a really positive thing that we're able to share. The next two slides then just show graphic information where you can see then the trends of $150,000 home and a $250,000 home. So you can see how the taxes gradually increase, and then the last year's slight, slight decrease. And so, so that's what it's looking for, our residential's, and then our commercial and apartment owners, that information is shared as well, and it's the same trend. The last thing that's always important for our taxpayers to understand is that there are credit refunds and different programs that they can use to help offset their taxes. And so it's important for homeowners to remember that these are programs that are available to them, and they can talk to their tax accountants or whoever it might be. But as an example, the Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund Circuit Breaker, that's something that's available every year. So it is based on income, household income. And then there's a sliding scale based on how much a homeowner could possibly get back in a refund based on their property taxes. The next one is not as common for districts, or excuse me, for taxpayers to use because it's based on a one-time event, where if they're because it's based on a one-time event where if they're, um, yep, if you just want to go ahead, Lori. So um, it's just based on if there is a, a larger increase from one year to the next, that they have the opportunity then to get a, a refund of sorts. And so that's just a one-time event. The last one then is for our senior citizens, and this is a tax deferral, which um, it, it, there, there's a amount that uh property taxes can be paid. Um, but it's a deferral, it's not forgiven. Um, but it does allow them then to have a, a set amount that they know that they'll be getting each year. Um, so uh, so that's the, that's the entire presentation. I know I get a little windy with that. Um, but um, I don't know if there are uh any questions. I don't know if we even have a public here. So I don't know if there are any questions from the public because we, we will most certainly take those at this time. And then the next step after this is then for the board to certify the uh twenty-one property tax levy.
I guess I just have a question. You were talking about the refund, the circuit breaker. I've never heard that term before, but is that what we typically recognize as the property tax home font, or homestead credit refund that most people, most guys want?
Yep, and, and so that's the one that you file like in August. And so there's a disjoint, yeah, so there's a disjoint of when you file your taxes because you have to have that data. And then this comes like in August, like August fifteenth or whatever is usually the deadline. So yes, that's what it's called. Circuit breakers like the old, old term, um, but some people remember it as that.
Perfect, thank you for that wonderful in-class presentation. Does anyone else have any questions?
And you all stayed awake.
Okay, if there is no questions, um, we are looking for a tax levy final certification of pay twenty-one. And I'm looking for a motion.
Motion moved. Second.
And, and I'm, I'm so sorry, we do need to specify the dollar amount.
Um, Barbie, will you tell us that?
Yes, and so the uh specific dollar amount for approval is uh twelve million, three hundred twelve thousand fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you so much. And we have a motion by Adam, seconded by Carnop. I'm going to call the roll, Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnop.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perwito, aye. Ms. Stark.
Aye.
Ms. Thornton.
Aye.
No other discussion than that passes. And we are going to move on to our resolution of um accepting gifts. So whereas School Board Policy seven oh six establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and whereas Minnesota Statute four sixty-five point zero-three states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gift received by the school district. And we would like to thank Jason, oh, Sitha, Sithathan for books for the Fridley Middle School Media Center. And if I can get somebody to make a motion to accept those gifts and thank Mr. Jason.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton to accept the gifts, thank the donor for the contribution. I will call the roll, Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnop.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perwito, aye. Ms. Stark.
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton.
Aye.
No other, um, no other comments, then we will um pass that. Next, we're going to move on to our second reading and adoption of policies. Mr. Isaacson, please.
Uh, thank you Board Chair Perwito, uh Board Member Superintendent Dr. Heil, and certainly welcome new Board Member, Mr. Meisner. I, I certainly hesitate to follow the scintillating reading of truth in taxation, but nonetheless, I present for you the second reading of Policy four oh seven. That is the employee right to know, the exposure to hazardous substances, and there are no changes to that policy since our first reading. Likewise, I also present the second reading of uh Policy four zero-nine. That is a new policy to Fridley that relates to employee publications, instructional materials, pensions and creations, and likewise, there are no changes since the first reading of that policy.
Thank you so much, and that was wonderful, just like your presentation. So um, if there is a motion for um to adopt the first Policy four oh seven and Policy four oh nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, seconded by Adam, and this will be to approve the second reading and adoption of Policy four oh seven and four oh nine. Any discussion? Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnop.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perwito is an aye. Ms. Stark.
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton.
Aye.
And with no other, um, no other discussion, we are going to pass those second readings. Next, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, a consent agenda, which is to approve a routine action items, including minutes of the regular school board meeting, the work session held on November seventeenth, twenty-twenty, our monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, lane changes, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Um, and I would um entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, is there any discussion? And I will call the roll, Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnop.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perwito is an aye. Ms. Stark.
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton.
Aye.
Thank you, and we will move on to written information. And now we're going to move on to a first reading of Policy four twenty-three, Employee-Student Relationships. And again, Mr. Isaacson.
And again, thank you Board Chair Perwito, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Uh, I present for you the first reading of Policy four twenty-three. Uh, this is a new policy. This, this policy models Masbo language, that's the Minnesota Association of School Business Officials. Um, I won't go into every detail, but fundamentally, what the policy serves to do is it defines the boundaries of student and employer relationships. Um, and the reason for that policy itself speaks more eloquently to its cause than I might otherwise aspire. Unless there's any other questions.
Thank you. We will um look forward to that second reading. And we are going to move on to reports from school board members. Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting held on November eighteenth. And Ms. Stark.
Yeah, we met, it was a rather short meeting again. Um, but basically the staff moved to all remote working. They had been on a hybrid system. Um, and then as we had a spike, they moved to the remote situation. Uh, mentorship groups are still up and running. They did have a virtual three M career fair. There were about twenty-four students who participated in that. They are still working on um magnet applications. They sent postcards to families right after the general election to remind them to go ahead and send in those applications. They are putting together, well, they put together College and Career Conference and the goal date was December eighth. So hopefully at our next meeting, I have updates on how that went. And um, their Lego League started. So um, hopefully we have some additional updates on that next month as well.
Thank you so much. And we will have a report on um Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD Board Meeting. And is that Mr. Carnop?
Yes, thank you Board Chair Prido. Uh, met with AMSD uh on the fourth. Uh, had a little bit of discussion about the, what the state budget looks like uh going into the twenty-twenty-one budget. It's actually looking uh relatively decent, all things considered, with about a six-hundred-million-dollar surplus. However, in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget, it's, there's certainly going to be a, a budget shortfall. They're predicting at one point three billion dollars, mostly due to COVID. Um, on January eighth, our own Dr. Heil will be presenting to the state legislature on behalf of AMSD. So that's certainly uh, an awesome thing to have in our district, to have our voices heard. We approved um some position papers specific to um early childhood education, English learner funding, facilities funding, school board renewal uh for operating referendums and special ed. Uh, one thing that was a little bit of a discussion was the school board um renewal of operating referendums this year. Uh, the different districts that had renewals were twelve for twelve. And through the entire year, a hundred and four out of a hundred and four. So the general thought there is, it's a lot of time, effort, money, money to just go through a renewal when they always seem to pass and looking for legislation to change that, so they're just automatic. Uh, lastly, we heard from two Senate elects, Minnesota Senators-elect Anne Johnson and Zach Duckworth. Uh, both seem very strong supporters of education and look to them for support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Northeast Metro nine sixteen, Ms. Stark again.
We had a very busy and productive meeting. It was quite a long meeting. Um, Valerie Dozland, who is the dr- district lobbyist from Ewald, Ewald Consulting came um, and gave us an update on happenings at the Capitol related to the twenty-twenty election results, the budget outlook, and the twenty-twenty-one legislative session. We also talked about the House and Senate Education Committees. It's likely that the intermediates will continue last year's platform for continued funding to address student mental health and school safety, extended time revenue for students and residential treatment facilities, and adjustments to the payment process for education of students who are wards of the state. We also heard from HR regarding the Grow Your Own Initiative. Um, and that's through the University of Minnesota and the University of St. Thomas. There's a total of fifty-four teachers from Northeast Metro nine sixteen and our member districts that have graduated from the U of M program since its inception in twenty-fourteen. There's currently twenty-six education assistants and paraprofessionals from Northeast Metro nine sixteen and our member, member districts currently enrolled in the St. Thomas program with the first cohort graduating in twenty-twenty-one. Um, the really neat thing that we talked about is this really innovative idea for um keeping contact with our students. Um, Care Eleven has made contact with nine sixteen and they're interested in coming out and learning more about what's happening. Basically, what they're doing is they're taking a nine-six, it's, it's really exciting. Um, and everyone got really um, uh, wrapped into the conversation. So they are taking a nine sixteen van and hooking up a large trailer to the back of it. And we have it set for climate control, heat, cooling, all of that. And we're basically going to each of the students' houses. Um, if teachers feel like there is a need, if parents feel like there's a need, they have the ability now to show up at the student's house with the supplies that are needed to supplement whatever lesson needs supplementing. So we're all really excited about an update next month. Um, as soon as we figure out what Care Eleven is going to do um, as far as covering this and doing a story, I will send out a link. But it's a bit of a silver lining in a, in a dark winter to think that we have the ability to send our teachers and support staff out to physically see and touch and interact with these students. And everything has gone through safety protocols, so we don't need to worry about that sort of thing. Um, you know, um, uh, COVID is obviously the number one priority in this process, but um, it just is that warm and fuzzy that I think we all know, all need right now to stay in touch with our kiddos. So that is my nine sixteen update.
Awesome, thank you. I, what an innovative way to reach out and visit students. I know that, that's a challenge. And I know even teachers are feeling sad that they don't get that interac- we all through a TV screen, it's just not the same.
Yeah, you can definitely tell a difference in the attitudes of everyone. Once they started talking about it, everyone sat up and got real involved in their computer screens. So we're really excited to report next month on what the status is.
Awesome, and I know um Jaiel McLemore is on the line. And I'm sure as soon as there is a link to that Care Eleven, that she will be on that and that'll be on the webpage. So look for that. Um, we also have a bunch of exciting, important future school board dates coming up. Uh, first of all, we are expecting our big winter break. So no school students from December twenty-third, twenty-twenty, until we come back for a brand-new fresh year, January third. So um, through January third, twenty-twenty-one. The next Fridley Public Schools work session will be January fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Next, AMSD Board Meeting, January eighth. Schools for Equity in Education will also be on January eighth. Our next live Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be January nineteenth, twenty-twenty. And the next NWSISD Board Meeting, January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Unless anyone has anything else to add, we are set for a wrap if somebody would like to um make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Meisner, welcome.
My first motion is-
I know, how exciting to close this out. So we're gonna take um a motion by Thornton, seconded by Meisner. Is there any discussion, anyone else have anything to add? We will do a final roll call, Mr. Adam.
Aye.
Mr. Carnop.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Ms. Perwito is an aye. Ms. Stark.
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you, everybody, please try and stay safe. Thank you to all of our educators and all of our staff, all of our employees for all that you've been doing. Um, and we just want to say thank you as the school board and stay safe. And we will see you next year. We are adjourned at eight twenty-six.